Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I am not Steve Kova. I would like to ask the joint veterans organizations to please present their colors. I'd like to ask Justin Cornell from Eagle Scout Troop 215 to please give the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the National Anthem from Jasmine Soriano and Holly McAvoy from Long Beach High School.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Through the stars and bright stars through the perilous fight, O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Please remain standing for an indication from Deacon Thomas J. Everard.
Let us place ourselves in the presence of our God of our own understanding. Creative God, source of life and inspiration, we ask your blessing upon our country, our community, our city. We look upon Long Beach as a gift to us, a wonder of your creation. We are ever mindful of its beauty, its richness, its splendor. We are called, we are all called, to be caretakers of our city. We ask your blessing on those elected to office, judges, councilpersons, legislators. They are sworn to uphold that care and public trust. May they be quiet in spirit and clear in judgment. May they use their moral compass frequently with right conviction. In opportunities, give them insight and vision. In plans and actions, give them foresight and prudence. In all things, give them patience and courage. We ask your blessing on those in authority, commissioners, supervisors. May they value their positions as they would as a head of their family. We ask your blessing on all public servants, administrators, workers, volunteers, and caregivers. May they treasure their occupations as noble tasks for the common good. And so we pray, God, our strength. God of wisdom and justice, we look to you for guidance. We ask your blessing on all citizens of this magnificent country, country and particularly our great city. Make us always mindful of our freedom, purchased daily by our brave guardians in uniform. Help us to treasure respect for our laws and for each individual and faith in your divine wisdom. May we learn that by serving our neighbor, we learn the true meaning of loving you. And to this we say.
Please be seated. Before we begin, there are some special people I'd like to acknowledge, their presence here, appreciate their coming. We'd like to thank Assemblywoman Melissa Miller for being here. We'd like to thank former Assemblyman Harvey Wiesenberg for being here and congratulate him on his 86th birthday. We'd like to welcome Nassau County Legislature, the Honorable Denise Ford. City Court Judge William Miller, the Honorable. From the office of, from the office of the Governor, Robin Fowlerath is here, thank you for being here. Long Beach School Board Member Sam Pinto, Dean Apostolino, and Maureen Broner are here, thank you. City Manager John Morando is here. And I'd also like to acknowledge many of our City Department Heads who are here, and Union President John Mooney, representative. Just want to say a quick word about our city and the three inductees today who have been given charge of the government. This is a very unique and special community. If you look out the window, it's pretty obvious, one reason why, you know, the fabulous beaches and the water we have here make this a unique place. But that's far from what makes this unique or special. It's the people here, the sense of community we have, and the purpose that we have working together here that makes it special and always has. Long Beach people are a little bit different. We don't just want to live in any regular white picket fence community. We are a little bit different, we see something different. We're a diverse community, which for Long Island is really unique. And I've always believed that if Long Beach can function properly, it's a really great example of the American experiment, shows us that America can do very well too. So the project we have here of governing Long Beach, a group of, I want to say uniquely difficult and special people, is challenging, but it's really a great endeavor that we've been striving for, for many decades now. What takes America being great, what's going to take Long Beach to continue to be great and to be even greater, is two things. It's going to take a public who's engaged and who cares, and it's going to take a governing body who listens and who cares. And both of those things in this room today are in abundance. It gives us so many reasons today to be hopeful and to be excited and to be gathered together on this auspicious occasion. You know, we know that when a population cares and listens, things get done. And unfortunately, we know that sometimes when people look away and are too busy with their lives, government doesn't always be the right thing. But when I look at who we are inducting here today, they're the best examples of democracy. There are three people who simply cared about their community enough to decide to put their names on the line and to run. None of them ever saw the spotlight, none of them ever thought about a massive political power, they're just regular people, like you and us, all of us who sat in these aisles, looked up and said, "I think we can do better." And they decided to take a shot at showing you that they can do that. Now, for all of us, we need to be there to give them the support, to give them the hope, to give them the feedback, to let them do that. And for their part, I think they know very well what they need to do. After all, being a public servant, as complicated as it sometimes gets, isn't really all that tricky. If you listen to people, listen enough, listen more than you speak, and you try to do what's best for the community, sometimes instead of what's best for you, although people may disagree with your outcome, they will never impugn your motives, they will never say you came in a bad place, they will never say you do not have integrity. All three of the inductees today are full of integrity, are full of caring about our community, and I can't wait to see what they will all achieve. In a moment, I'm going to introduce three people to each speak of a specific inductee and then swear that inductee is. But I'd like to mention something very quickly about Karen, Liz, and Mike. Karen, your financial acumen, your toughness, your roots, and your respect in the community are going to serve you well as counsel. There is a reason why voters resoundingly put you here, and we all look forward to working with you and watching you succeed. Congratulations. Liz, you've been a champion for so many, for so long, doing it from the other side, facing this way. And about five years ago, there was an occasion where Liz entreated the council in this very room for equal treatment, and she wasn't treated very well in response. And I met her in the hallway right out there, and she was not feeling too great about what she was just put through, and we gave each other a hug, and we said, "If we keep working together, we keep striving for what's right, we're going to keep going, we're not going to quit." And here, ladies and gentlemen, Liz Treston, a champion for the people of the city. Mike, I think the slogan is simple, "If we could run shine, we could run the city." It's actually not really far off. Trying to try to run a profit should be, you know, a universal thing that we all agree on. You know, Mike Delory's roots in the city go back about farther than anybody in this room, maybe except for Deacon Everard and Harvey. But Mike's very simple, he just cares about his community, knows that if you try to do what's right most of the time, if not all of the time, we'll get to the right result. And his service, whether it's on the beach, whether it's in so many different capacities, is going to come in handy because a lot of common sense, a lot of integrity is basically what is needed now more than ever. We're so thrilled to have Mike Delory. To introduce Karen McGinnis and somebody who I think is thrilled not to have to be in this room all that much, the Honorable Eileen Goggins.
All right, welcome and Happy New Year, Long Beach, and to all who are present today. I am honored to be here today, inducting Councilwoman Karen McGinnis and speaking on her behalf. I would first like to acknowledge and welcome Karen's family members, who are here today to celebrate Karen, and I think it's like the first five-year-old, so. Welcome Karen's parents, Charles and Ann McGinnis, Karen's husband Terry and his sons, who are Karen's stepsons, Michael and Sean. Michael is here today with his fiancee, congratulations. And his son, Michael. Sean is here with his wife, Maria. We are also welcoming Karen's brother Stephen, his wife Peggy, and their daughters Kathleen and Molly. Karen's brother Charles is here with his wife Sarah and their sons Brendan, Charles, and Grayson. Karen's sister, welcome Mary Ellen, her husband Santos, and their sons Derek and Alex Andrew. And Karen's cousins Billy and Mark. I am sure you are also proud of Karen. Today is an important and special occasion, not only for Karen and our other newly-elected City Council Members, Liz Treston and Mike Delory, but for all of the Long Beach residents. Today marks a new year and a new beginning. We are here today to officially induct and welcome our three new City Council Persons who were elected by the Long Beach residents with a promise and hope for positive change, with a promise and hope to restore trust in a good, honest, transparent, smart, and effective government. It is no wonder why the Long Beach community elected Karen McGinnis. After all, she is smart and experienced and knows a lot about finance, including balancing a budget and so much more. She graduated from the University of Maryland with a Bachelor of Arts degree in Government and Politics, where she minored in Economics. She received her Masters in Government and Politics from St. John's University. She has had a successful career for the past 25 years as a finance executive in both public and private companies. She began her career at AOL Time Magazine, where she held manhunt roles at Time and Fortune magazines. She currently is the VP of Finance and Strategic Planning at the Association of American Publishers. For many years, she has been a community advocate, involved and committed to serving the Long Beach community. She has served as an officer of the West End Neighbors Association and is also a member of the auxiliary of the VFW Lieutenant John Ethel Grady Post 1384 and the Ladies Ancient Order of Hibernians. Long Beach is her home. She moved here 15 years ago and bought a house in the West End. She suffered, but survived sadly. She met her husband Terry in 2011 at the VFW. Terry has lived in Long Beach for the past 25 years and raised his sons here. Together, Karen and Terry continue to be a part of the Long Beach community. She is not new or naive to Long Beach politics or Long Beach government. She started attending and participating in City Council meetings back in 2007 as an officer of the West End Neighbor Civic Association. She has continued to attend, question, comment, and make recommendations, especially regarding the city's financial issues. Karen is clearly qualified to serve based on her professional credentials and commitment to community service. But it's because of the following qualities she will be great in her new position. Karen is the real thing, she's genuine, she really cares about the Long Beach people, and that is why she ran for office. She's not a phony, she's sincere, she's confident but humble, she doesn't have an ego, which will get in the way, she's compassionate and committed, she's appreciative and grateful, she's a team player but also independent, she's a hard worker who takes her job very seriously. She is smart and strong and tenacious, she's elegant and professional, she is a good and caring person who is sensitive to the issues and the needs of the community and is driven to do what is right. It is these qualities which will guide her and help her in her new role. She has a tough job ahead of her, but one that she will undoubtedly embrace with competence and compassion. Thank you, Karen, for taking on this task and responsibility and for your commitment and for all the good that you and your fellow council members will accomplish in the years ahead. It is now my honor to introduce Councilwoman Karen McGinnis. Karen, please repeat after me. I, Karen McGinnis.
I, Karen McGinnis.
Residing in the city of Long Beach.
Residing in the city of Long Beach.
County of Nassau, state of New York.
County of Nassau, state of New York.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Charter and Code of Ordinances.
The Charter and the Code of Ordinances.
Of the city of Long Beach.
Of the city of Long Beach.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Council Members.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Long Beach City Council.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Judge Goggins said everything. Thank you, honored officials, ceremony participants, friends and family, for being here today, and Happy New Year. Thank you, Judge Goggins, for swearing me in today. You have been and continue to be a role model to me and many other women who want to serve in government. Thank you for your leadership. So, many of you know that the very fact that me and my colleagues, Liz Treston and Mike Delory, are up here today means that the Long Beach City Council will have the fresh start it so desperately needs and deserves, and for that, thank you. This couldn't have happened without many of the people in this room, too many to mention in fact, but I have to mention just a few. First off, thank you to Councilwoman John Bendo for having the courage to run for City Council over two years ago. You and your team fucked the system and truly started this new wave. Thank you, Steve Camden, for your nonstop work, dedication, and tremendous support throughout this really extended campaign cycle. You are a founding example of the best of Long Beach, and I will be forever grateful. Thank you to my brother Stephen McGinnis, who for many years has taught me the ropes of politics in general, and to my friend Ed Moran, who has taught me the ropes of politics in Long Beach. Thank you to Ron Paganini, my running mate on the New Wave Dem ticket. I admire your honesty and tenacity, and want you to know it has been a privilege to get to know you during this campaign. I look forward to working with you to improve services in our city. Thank you to my parents, Charles and Ann McGinnis, and siblings, Charles and Mary Ellen, as well as all my relatives who cannot be here today, including my Aunt Anne Marie. But especially my relatives, Uncle Tommy, Aunt Teresa, and Cousin Christina, who are facing challenges right now. Getting older only makes me realize more and more how lucky I am to have such a smart, passionate, and loving family. Finally, I want to thank my husband, Terry Blackburn, for truly being my better half. Your love, understanding, devotion, and unique sense of humor have, uh, made each, make our each and every day together a blessing. I love you. Okay, let's get down to business. Long Beach voters have manifested change in our governance, and various government agencies have recommended changes in how our government manages certain processes. That does not mean our government isn't working right now. In fact, I must echo many hardworking city employees. You weathered a lot over the years, and it's truly appreciated. What the mandate and recommendations do mean, however, is that we must always strive to do better. It means seizing responsible and sustainable economic growth opportunities, cost savings opportunities, and continually accepting and implementing new and better ways of doing things. Change like this is hard, and it's messy. In fact, the new City Council is already doing extensive planning to change how the city is governing, managed, and conducting its business. But it would be irresponsible to suggest that change like this is going to be immediate. I promise though, it will be the focus of this council, and we will get it done. Bottom line, each and every day, we all wake up knowing, Long Beach has serious financial challenges, Long Beach has serious infrastructure challenges, Long Beach has serious environmental and resiliency challenges, and Long Beach has serious communication challenges within the city and with other levels of government. Last week, Terry and I visited the Grand Canyon for the first time. It was truly spectacular, especially at a time when I was seeking inspiration for today's speech. In looking at the Grand Canyon, it struck me, nature is all-powerful. Nature doesn't care about payroll scandals, legal interpretations, or secret Facebook pages. Long Beach, this truly amazing city by the sea, or as my nephew Brendan says, his favorite place in the world, must put its past political and personal differences aside and unite to chart our delicate future as a barrier on the community. I am honored and proud to say that with your continual support and understanding, me and my fellow council members are up to the challenge of actively governing the city the way it should be. I want to close with my vision of Long Beach governance, as I mentioned this past September. Together, we are going to focus on transparency, equity, inclusion, innovation, and environmental stewardship. We will work to make Long Beach the model, award-winning, inclusive, and environmentally sustainable city that we all know we can be and we should be. Thank you, Long Beach, thank you to our veterans and servicemen and women who protect us every day, and God bless America.
Ladies and gentlemen, while the Honor Guard is being dismissed, if we could give them a round of applause, please. Thank you, you may be seated. I'd like to now call up City Council Member John Bendo and Elizabeth Treston-Pine.
So I just, Liz, I just need you to know Judge Goggins may yield most of my time. Stay happy as long. Today's a day that many of us in Long Beach and a lot of people in the room here have been looking forward to. In both the primary and the general election, the voters of the city signaled they want to see change. And in doing that, the voters elected three outstanding individuals with Liz, Karen, and Mike, and they are going to serve the residents of this city well. And I'm also proud to call all three of them my friends. But really, I'm here at least to talk about Liz. The great American philosopher, Yogi Berra, who also happens to play a little baseball, said, "If you come to a fork in the road, take it." And I think that best describes Liz's journey to get where we are today. Liz may not have gotten, or Liz may not have gone where she intended to go. where she intended to go, but I think she ended up exactly where she needed to be. Running for City Council was not on her list of things to do in her life. But for those of you that know Liz, you know she steps up in times of need. You would be hard-pressed to find a more committed, compassionate, or knowledgeable advocate for the residents of Long Beach than Liz. She has the determination, the drive, to take on the City Council's challenges head-on. And she'll do so with civility, transparency, and inclusion. The residents of Long Beach are fortunate to have Liz working for them. And with that, of course, she changes her mind and runs out. I ask you to raise the right hand. So please raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Elizabeth Trusson, Elizabeth Trusson, residing in the City of Long Beach.
Residing in the City of Long Beach.
County of Nassau, State of New York.
County of Nassau, State of New York.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Charter and Code of Ordinances of the City of Long Beach.
The Charter and the Code of Ordinances of the City of Long Beach.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of City Council member.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of the office of City Council member.
The office of City Council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to 2020. The debate about whether this is the beginning of a new decade or not may be ganked about today, but this is certainly a new day in Long Beach. It is certainly the beginning of your city. The City Council presents a high 21% for the residents of Long Beach. Pardon me once you say. Like Linda, the good witch from the Wizard of Oz. Come out, come out, wherever you are. Come out, come out, pizza young lady who fell from a star. Unfortunately, I am not that young, and I am certainly not from Kansas. Like Dorothy in her dreams, I do feel that we have thrown the water upon the wicked and watched them melt. Come out, come out, wherever you are. The City of Long Beach needs you. We need you. You have imagination, and you have great ideas, and I want to hear them. I not only want to hear about your plans, but I want to hear about how we will implement them. We need to think out of the box. The City Council is ready to do that. You are looking at a new beginning. A new hope to speak. Come out, come out, wherever you are. As Todd said, it was not too long ago, not too many feet from where I'm sitting right now, that I would speak to the wall behind me because I could not see the council members and the management and set the fancy chairs in my chair. One day, I decided to turn around and talk to you instead. You were the ones that were going to listen. Next week, if the shipping department in Pennsylvania gets itself together, I will be sitting there with the fancy chairs with the great assistance of our workforce. You will be heard as Todd, who may not like what you hear, but you will be heard. Come out, come out, wherever you are. This building is not for a few. It is for everyone. We have a long road in front of us. It may not be a yellow brick road, but it is very, very long. I can tell you for the last six months or more, my days have been filled with reading city budgets, controlling reports from the state, our codes, and how to run a responsible government. I will not, I will be honest. Not unlike Dorothy, my dreams have been filled with nightmares. A few witches, good and bad, and a couple of flying monkeys. My goal was to get to Oz. This may not look like the grand city, but one day, in your building, come out, come out, wherever you are. There is truly no place like home.
And I'd like to call up the Mayor of East Williston, the Honorable Bonnie Puritzin.
Good afternoon. St. Mary? Before I start, I just want to say, Councilwoman McGinnis, glad that you could stand up here and be so raw and so emotional. I think it shows how transparent and passionate you are. I give you so much credit. Good afternoon and a very Happy New Year as the roaring twenties begin anew. When I saw that Mike DeLorey was running for office, I was so excited for him and terrified for me. I had just been elected Mayor of East Williston, and I had worked with and relied upon Mike for the prior years while I was Deputy Mayor. I was very much counting on his undivided attention when I took on the role as mayor, but in my heart and from experience, I knew Mike was able to do it all. Mike is someone who does everything with passion and commitment. East Williston is a small village, and that's where Michael works with us. There is no chain of command to rely on and no people to delegate to. We all work directly with the heads of our departments, whether that is the Department of Public Works, library, building department, fire department, et cetera. He is our treasurer, but wears so many hats. He is relied upon and interacts on a very regular basis with these department heads and residents, and is so well-respected. I know the election in Long Beach was a nail-biter, but believe me, you all come out ahead here. Mike is dedicated, smart, honest, and thoughtful to work with. There will be no regrets. The residents will be grateful for his service, as I am. Personally, Mike and I have a lot in common, and we recognized our commonalities on the very first day we met, which led to easy conversation and excellent communication. We are both involved in our parishes, and we are both passionate about scouting and the fire service. I am a Girl Scout and Boy Scout leader and the proud mother of an Eagle Scout and the Gold Girl Scout. And congratulations to you. Mike lit up like a Christmas tree when recently talking to me about his work with two Eagle projects here in your great city. That says so much for Mike. I come from a very low line of firefighters, my father being a 50-plus-year volunteer in Menola, and my brother just finished his tenure as fire chief. When Mike learned this about me, he practically asked for my autograph. He's a man who truly appreciates volunteerism and is never short of contributing his own time and talents to a cause. I know Mike always helps here in Long Beach with Movies on the Beach, and on a much smaller scale, we just had our first outdoor movie in the park in East Williston. Mike was right there on top of it for us. I know that if Mike was asked to put together a dinner party of anyone he could invite, dead or alive, there would be no celebrities and no athletes at that table. The table would be filled with firefighters, police officers, scouts, his family, and warm conversations. Residents of Long Beach, today, you are blessed, and I congratulate you. I could go on for a very long time, but it's the first day of 2020, and there will be plenty of Mike to brag about in the future. I wish Mike so much success and all the newly-elected officials, and I thank you for the honor of allowing me to participate in this ceremony today. Michael, please raise your right hand. I am Michael DeLorey.
I am Michael DeLorey.
Residing in the City of Long Beach.
Residing in the City of Long Beach.
County of Nassau, State of New York.
County of Nassau, State of New York.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Charter and Code of Ordinances.
The Charter and Code of Ordinances.
Of the City of Long Beach.
Of the City of Long Beach.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of...
City Council member.
City Council member.
According to the best of my ability. And I'm going to end this, so help me God.
Wow. Good afternoon and Happy New Year. I want to thank my Senator Collette for administering the oath of office to me as your elected representative on the Long Beach City Council. Today is not about one individual being sworn in. It's about the three of us, Karen, Liz, and I, being sworn in together to represent all of the residents of the City of Long Beach. I am confident that the three of us, along with John Bendo and Scott Mandel, will work together with a common goal of making this city a better beach community. The love I have for this city is the reason I chose to run for City Council. My contribution to the City Council is my expertise in the area of government finance and work on budgetary issues. Along with the skills of my fellow City Council members, we bring a variety of experience. Remember, if we work hard to make this city better, it will become a better beach in the future. There are many headwinds to deal with, but usually, after a pretty bad storm, the winds usually change direction and sunshine eventually appears. I am thankful to my wife Anne, my daughter Melissa, my brother Robert and his wife Donna, who were constant supporters as well as my in-laws, Del, Don, and Tiger. To Jim Moriarty, without his support, I would not be here. And to Warren, who made me look good on the campaign trail. And to Chris Marie, Bonnie Kay, and my coworkers and friends. Thank you for coming today and for your support and trust in me. And I am hopeful that every tomorrow will be better than yesterday. Thank you.
By the way, who knew that Movies on the Beach would become like a political catalyst? Like, everyone who's worked at Movies on the Beach is, like, almost ready for something or elected to something. On some other more serious note, before we close out, I'd just like us to all think for a minute where we were seven years ago today on January 1st of 2013, having experienced Sandy just two months before. We weren't sure if the future would hold. We didn't know if we'd be here, whether we'd be here, how strong we'd be. And together, we could face this future together, knowing that there's nothing that we cannot do. Once again, let's have a round of applause for the new president. If you have any parking issues, Karen's 889. I'd like to now proudly call up Father Francis Shannon from St. Mary's Star of the Sea from another beach community on Far Rock.
Good afternoon, everyone. Frank Shannon from Karen and Mike, it's been a pleasure to celebrate this with you and to listen to you. You're blessed. You're very blessed. Frank Shannon from Tennessee Avenue, 50 years old, 50 is there, and St. Mary's Star of the Sea in Far Rock. But I'm really honored to be here because my friend Liz asked me to give a little blessing. Liz and I were actually in grammar school together, except I would have been in eighth grade, she would have been in kindergarten. And I'm 37. But you know what? I was so honored with Liz and to be with Mrs. Liz. Mom, just such a thrill. We all grew up together. So I was so honored. This morning's Mass in my church is Jesus' Mother, Mary. We begin the year honoring a mother's birth. So that was my prayer, that that beautiful love will always grow your work together. And I'm sure, from what Liz showed, you know, she told me, there'll be a few differences of opinions. There'll be a little fight here and there, maybe World War III sometime. But you know, I'm just praying in all your work and all you do that you know that friendship and that love, at the end of the day, that is good for you guys. Right? And I just have a... I'm going to use the blessing from our first reading this morning. The faithful Jewish community plodding through the desert with Moses and Aaron, they were having a tough time, and it looked like the future was almost desperate. But the teaching was this: Put your trust in God, But the teaching was this, put your trust in God, and you won't believe what's about to happen. So that's my prayer for your work together. So if you don't bow your heads, it's from the book of Numbers, and it's that very pretty blessing, all of us know it. "The Lord said to Moses, 'Speak to Aaron and his sons and tell them: This is how you shall bless the Israelites. Say to them, 'The Lord bless you and keep you; the Lord let his faith shine upon you and be gracious to you; the Lord look upon you kindly and give you his peace.' May there be a great deal of peace and joy." Let this congregation say amen. Happy New Year, everybody, I'm glad.
My favorite Yogi Berrism is someone once told him that the mayor of Dublin, Ireland is Jewish, and without missing a beat, said, "Only in America." I'd like to call up the very special Long Beach resident, retired petty officer second class Alana Ayala. Can we all rise and join her in God's embrace? Once again, thank you to our veterans here today and our veterans around the world. Now I'd like to ask everyone to be seated for the city clerk to now call the official meeting to order.
Good afternoon, and welcome to a special meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach, held Wednesday, January 1st, 2020, at 12:00 noon. And now the roll call, councilmember Bendo.
Present.
Councilmember Delory.
Present.
Councilmember Mandel.
Present.
Councilmember McGinnis. And councilmember Trasten. But the record indicates the presence of acting city manager John Miranda and assistant corporation counsel Richard Barrios. The first item today is a resolution electing a temporary president of the city council of the city of Long Beach. Are there any motions at this time?
I make a motion to add Karen McGinnis' name to the item and to vote on the item.
I second.
I second the motion.
Boy, councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis.
Yes. Yes.
Our second item is a resolution electing the president of the city council of the city of Long Beach. Are there any motions at this time?
Yes. I make a motion to add John Bendo to the item and to vote on the item.
I second.
I second.
Boy, councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis.
Yes. Yes.
So before we end today's meeting, this is probably the shortest city council meeting anyone's ever had. I just want to thank everyone for coming today, especially, it's a holiday, but thank you for being here. And I started out with a Yogi-ism, I'm going to close us with a Yogi-ism. The future ain't what it used to be. Today's a new day in Long Beach city government. The people sitting up here with me, as well as the numerous people that put in countless hours of work to get us here, did this because, like all of you, we love our city, and we want it to be the best possible place to live, work, and play. We want to ensure that city government is best representing the interests of those who we work for, which is the residents of this city. That is why you put us here, and that is what we intend to do. But the story isn't just about the five of us up here. To move on to the city forward, it needs to be a partnership. A partnership of the residents, who are going to tell us their concerns, and we're going to try to address them. The city employees, who work day in and day out to keep this city running, often with Gorilla Blue and Flex Seal. And then, this council, who is determined to take a proactive approach to addressing the challenges that this is, that our city is facing right now. We are all in this together, and we will only succeed if we move forward together. So thank you for coming, and with that, I'd like to take a motion to close the meeting.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
Motion to close. Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Trasten.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.